Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call to order the San Jose City Council meeting for the afternoon of June 4th. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Jimenez. Torres.
Present.
Cohen.
Here.
Ortiz.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Dwan.
Here.
Candelas.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Batra.
Present.
Kamay.
Present.
Mahan.
Here.
Yevakorm.
Great, thank you. All right, now, if you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Today's invocation will be given by Gabrielle Antolovich, President of the Billy De Frank LGBTQ+ Community Center, and Councilmember Davis will tell us more.
Thank you, Mayor. Gabrielle Antolovich is a champion of the LGBTQ+ community, whose leadership and advocacy have transformed the center into a hub of community and a safe haven for anyone seeking connection and empowerment. San Jose is fortunate to have them. And I can't stress enough how important community and connection is. And I want to talk a little bit before Gabrielle starts, and she's a big supporter of this, so I know she's not going to mind. Blue Zones, we have Blue Zones activities going on all week, and there is a Blue Zones Community Event. And we, Blue Zones promotes physical and mental well-being. This community event is at Sharks Ice tomorrow. Doors open at 4:00 PM, and the program starts at 5:00 PM. Everyone is invited. And again, this is at Sharks Ice, not the SAP Center, but Sharks Ice on 10th and Alma. So I'd like to welcome Gabrielle to the microphone to do our invocation.
Member Dev Davis, I love the Blue Zone because it's one of the colors of the rainbow. Happy Pride Month! My name's Gabrielle Antolovich, and I'm actually a first-generation immigrant. I'm actually very old. You know, I was born in 1950 in Australia, and my parents were recruited by the Australian government. And you know, the American government did the same thing. They wanted all of these immigrants to rebuild the country after the Second World War. And so, my first memory as a conscious being was me being a six-year-old defending my parents against the white Australian haters of immigrants. They were spitting at my parents, they were telling them to go back home. And if you know your history, Yugoslavia doesn't even exist anymore. And so, it was so stressful for me, and my parents were trying to protect me, the teeny-six-year-old. So my first memory of waking up consciously was running at those white Australians and swearing at them in Yugoslavian. And you know what? They ran away. And can you imagine how this six-year-old felt? I was born into being an ally for my immigrant parents, and then I became an ally for all the immigrant first-generation kids at school. And so, the invocation is actually being dedicated to city council and city employees who have been great allies to the LGBTQ community. We want to honor you under this umbrella of huge hate against us all over the place. Woo, it nearly threw me over, did you see that? Woo! And so, I want to say how much our LGBTQ community really appreciates your allyship. Now, I know city council passed a resolution unanimously to support us, and we love that. I actually put my name in first to speak and ended up speaking last. And what I realized is that we're the only minority that gets rejected by our families. And our immigrant families are sometimes a little more harsh about the LGBTQ community. One of my parents never accepted me till her dying day in her 90s. And so, there is a hole that is left inside of us LGBTQs because our family, the very family that's supposed to protect us, pushed us away. And I remember listening to the support from city council, and not just with the resolution, but the many times city council members, and you know who you are, kept coming forward to support us, help us. And city employees who have helped us, you know, we're in a city-owned building, and our building, yours and ours, has become a sanctuary against all the hate. And we really appreciate that we have a city-owned building that is supported by you all. So what I'm saying is, you know, that the... There is a word for that hole that is left inside when your family rejects you. It's called losing permanency. And the foster care system uses that term, losing permanency. So it's really hard to get your life back together. And what I want to do is say, we are so blessed to be in San Jose, to have city council and city employees who support us and stand with us like we have stood with many other minorities as well. So with that, I want to thank city council and employees with the Billy De Frank Fabulous Ally Award. We need a photo. And any employees of the city who want to be in this photo, come on down.
Capturing the moment takes a long time.
Thank you, Gabrielle. That was a beautiful, that was a wonderful surprise, and we really appreciate your tremendous leadership. Normally, we're giving out the commendations and proclamations here, but this is pretty awesome. We'll put it in a place of honor at City Hall here. Thank you again for that invocation. We are on to our ceremonial items. We're going to start with Councilmember Ortiz. If you join me here at the podium, we will recognize Mimi Hernandez of Prosperity Labs.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everyone. Today, we are honoring someone who has made immeasurable difference for the city's small-business community, a longtime friend and my mentor, Mimi Hernandez. Mimi has a long history working on behalf of small businesses, particularly from historically disinvested communities, including as a strategic advisor to the Alamo Rock Santa Clara Street Business Association. In 2020, Mimi founded Prosperity Lab, a nonprofit dedicated to empowering women and minority entrepreneurs by providing them education on everything from digital skills to financial literacy, one-on-one business advising, and assistance in accessing finance and other support in getting a business off the ground. I'm thankful to see so many members of the Prosperity Labs team joining us here today. Prosperity Lab has also taken a leading role in helping underserved corridors form new business associations, greatly enhancing small-business advocacy in the city, and helping entrepreneurs gain access to their policymakers. In addition, Mimi has formed valuable partnerships with both the city's Office of Economic Development and other community organizations, consistently expanding and compounding the resources available to our city's business community. Mimi has also earned the reputation as a powerful mentor, working to elevate her team members into leaders who can confidently serve underrepresented communities in San Jose. It's an honor to present her with a commendation recognizing her work to create a thriving, sustainable San Jose for everyone. And now, I'd like to invite our friend, Mimi, to say a few words.
We want to start this, good afternoon. Today, my team and I are very thrilled to receive a commendation from Councilmember Ortiz, a good friend of Prosperity Lab and of San Jose. This commendation celebrates our dedication to helping small-business, minority-owned, women-owned, and vulnerable businesses thrive. It highlights our commitment to fostering a vibrant and resilient local business environment. We're immensely proud of our team and our entrepreneurial community. Some of them are here with us to celebrate with us. So, thank you, guys. With the resources from the city of San Jose Office of Economic Development, the Office of Immigrant Affairs, thank you, Sulma, we are engaged directly with local businesses, providing personalized mentoring, tailored workshops, and contributing to community building. We are truly thankful for this recognition and for the support from our community leaders such as Peter Ortiz, Omar Domingo... I'm sorry, Councilmember Candelas. If you believe in our mission, please consider signing up for some of our classes or supporting, we do accept volunteers for our Digital Equity Lab, which is a relatively fairly new program. So we just want to thank everyone. And I want to say this recognition is really for my team, because I'm nothing without my team. They are like some of the most talented, dedicated human beings that I'm lucky to have in my team. So I'm just going to shout out their names really quickly. Carlos Reza, John, Anita, Aline, my co-founder, Melida Alfaro, Diego Guerra, no, Calderon?
Calderon Guerra.
Calderon Guerra, Brianna Ricardes. And everybody knows Armando Ricardes, one of our community heroes. There are a few teams, part of my team that is out of the area, it's remote. You know, Pablo Allen, Isha Loring, who couldn't be here with us, and Brandon, who is no longer with us, but was a big part of our team. We also want to thank our families, our business owners that believe in us and allow us to provide them with the tools to grow their potential. Thank you.
Now, I invite the mayor to present the commendation, and if any colleagues would like to join, please come on down.
All right, Councilwoman Torres, if you would join me here at the podium, we will recognize UIK, Japanese-American Community Senior Center.
Good afternoon, everyone. And my name is Councilmember Omar Torres, and I'm the Councilmember of District 3, representing Japantown. It is a pleasure to honor such an extraordinary organization that has provided unrivaled services, empowered our seniors, and continued to nourish and foster a stronger community. Today, I would like to take time to recognize and commend UIK for their historic 50th anniversary as being one of the leading organizations, not only in Japantown, but as San Jose as a whole. UIK works incredibly hard as both advocate and reliable service provider in programs like Healthy Aging Initiative, Senior Day Services, social and active events, and a variety of programs they offer to our senior community throughout our city of San Jose. I am grateful to have UIK in our community, working to take care of our senior citizens and really empower them to be independent, lead enriching lives, and thrive in this beautiful community. With that, it is with the greatest honor to present this commendation alongside Mayor Mahan to UIK for 50 years of outstanding community service that's invested time, resources, and care into our senior citizen population, the city of San Jose and its residents. Thank you, UIK, for all that you do, and congratulations again for 50 years. And it's time to start planning the 51st anniversary. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Councilmember Torres. We just wanted to thank the city for your continued support. And, you know, 50 years is a long time, and we can't do that alone. There are many people behind that to make it happen, and we have received, you know, years of support from the city, and so we really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Councilmember. And don't go anywhere. We'll also invite Councilwoman Davis and Councilwoman Foley to join us to recognize and proclaim June as Pride Month.
Happy Pride, everyone! Councilmember Torres, Councilmember Foley, and I are excited to officially kick off Pride celebrations with this proclamation and a flag raising this evening at 5:00 PM. Please join us outside the rotunda to raise the Pride and transgender flags. We will have performances by the Silicon Valley Gay Men's Chorus, Ensemble Folclorico Colibri, and drag performer Gemini. With these two ceremonies, we honor and celebrate the history and legacy of the LGBTQ+ pioneers, activists, and allies who advocate for love, acceptance, and equality for all. Our city takes pride in our diverse community and the progress we've made towards equality. However, we also acknowledge the work still needed to achieve full acceptance and rights for all LGBTQ+ individuals. Community providers like the LGBTQ Youth Space support us in this effort by providing a safe and confidential space for our youth and young adults. They offer essential resources such as support groups, art workshops, leadership opportunities, and mental health services in multiple languages. They are currently located at North First Street. Adrienne Keel, the Director of the LGBTQ Youth Center, is here to accept the proclamation and say a few words. Adrienne?
Thank you. This morning, I was counting, admittedly, on my fingers that this is my 13th Pride Month with my program. And if anyone has worked in nonprofits, 13 years at a nonprofit is like 300 years in other work capacities. And I say that, thank you so much. I say that not for your applause, but rather, when you're serving the community, and perhaps our councilmembers can attest to this as well, if you're in the job for a long time, you have to remember your why, because you cannot do this work effectively on autopilot. And my why, and I would say that this resonates with my team, my personal sort of mission statement is, be the adult you needed, right? When you're doing this work, when you're serving young people, be the adult you needed. At our staff meeting last Friday, I asked all of our team, raise your hand if you, growing up as a queer or trans person, needed a safe adult. And without hesitation, all of our arms went up. And so, I invite you, because I like actionable things, I invite you to consider what it means to be a safe person, a safe adult for young people, right? When I vote, I'm not going to do, I'm not going to cast a vote that's going to cause you harm, right? I'm going to honor you, even when you're not in the room. Whoever you are is going to be honored, even if you're not around. And I'm going to listen, and when I don't know, I'm going to do the work to learn. If I'm struggling with something, I'm going to put the work in so I can be that person for you. So I encourage you all, it costs nothing to be a safe adult. Happy Pride! Thank you so much to our councilmembers for having me today. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for those great ceremonial items. We are on to orders of the day. Does anyone on the council have any changes to the printed agenda? Not seeing any. We will move on to the closed session report. Nora?
Whoops, there we go. Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report on a closed session today.
Great, thank you, Nora. We will now move on to the consent calendar. I know Councilwoman Cohen would like to pull item 2.33.
Correct.
And Councilmember, do you want to start there, or should we take that separately?
Either way, we'll take it separately from the entire consent, so we can either...
Okay.
Take the rest of the consent first.
I don't see any other hands. Would anyone like to make a motion on the remainder of the consent calendar, all the other items?
Move approval.
Second.
Great, thank you. Do we have public comment on the items other than 2.33?
No.
Okay, so we'll come back for a vote on the rest of the consent calendar.
I'm still waiting on two votes. Accidentally ended it early. I mean, it's, so, Jimenez, is that a yes?
Yes.
Okay, so motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Okay, great. So then we are, thank you, Tony. So now, we will take item 2.33, and I'll turn to Councilwoman Cohen.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm excited to, for our brief discussion, or hopefully brief discussion, about the Regional Housing Bond, which is being placed on the ballot presumably this month by the Bay Area Housing Authority, Housing and Finance Authority. This is a once-in-a-generation, or even possibly, probably, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for huge amount of transformational investment in affordable housing across the Bay Area. And just for the sake of, just to understand the magnitude, Measure A, which was a huge regional housing bond just in Santa Clara County, provided a billion dollars and built thousands of housing units. Santa Clara County alone would receive from this regional housing bond $4.5 billion, which is, you know, as you do the math, four and a half times more than what was in Santa Clara County before. This could potentially build up to 10,000 housing units in Santa Clara County. San Jose, based on the way this is structured, would have direct control over $2.1 billion of that amount of money because we're the largest city in Santa Clara County. And all of us on council have had various and sometimes differing priorities for how we want to invest money that we have and how we will want to invest money that comes in from this bond. The ballot measure creates broad categories that must be followed broadly as local jurisdictions spend the money. The memo submitted by me in collaboration with Mayor Mahan, Councilmembers Kamay, Jimenez, and Davis, ensures that we have a broad set of spending categories available to us when the money starts to roll in. I want to thank our partners in the nonprofit space for working with us to make sure all our needs are included. I want to highlight, for example, our commitment to making sure that we invest a significant portion in the ELI category of affordable housing. Also, it's important that the measure requires public outreach as a detailed spending plan is proposed after the bond passes. I'm being optimistic that the bond will pass. I, we all hope it will. Approval of this memo is only the beginning of the work ahead. Assuming we vote to endorse the regional housing bond, we must commit ourselves to helping explain to voters the incredible opportunity before us and help push this across the finish line. So I'd like to make a motion to approve our memo, which includes an endorsement of the regional housing bond and a number of other items that are enumerated in there. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I also just, I think Councilwoman Cohen outlined the issue as well. I do want to add my thanks to colleagues on the memo. We've had a lot of productive conversations. We have two local organizations leading this effort in our county that's SV at Home and Working Partnerships. So I want to recognize both of them and thank them for their early and steadfast engagement in this work. And as Councilwoman Cohen said, what we've outlined here in the memo is consistent with the direction in the state authorizing legislation. And I think it shows a portfolio approach, a multi-pronged approach that balances immediate needs to address the humanitarian crisis on our streets, but at the same time, puts most of the dollars into long-term, more sustainable solutions. And so, that balanced approach, I think, bodes well for both passing this measure in November, which I very much hope happens, and then giving us the ability to deploy multiple solutions at once. There will be a lot of work ahead. I know we received many letters of support. There's a great coalition coming together. I think a very diverse and broad-based coalition to support this measure. I'm committed to not just getting it passed, but ensuring that the dollars are deployed quickly, effectively, for maximum impact to support working families and help us address our homelessness crisis. So we have a lot of work ahead of us, but just really want to thank my colleagues again, all the partners who have come together, and look forward to seeing our city officially go on the record in support of what would be a just historic investment in affordable housing. So, thank you all very much. I'm going to turn to other colleagues for comments and questions, and then we'll head to public comment. Let me turn next to Councilwoman Batra.
Thank you very much, Mayor. The reason I was going to ask for the same thing, to pull this item out from the consent calendar, like Councilmember Cohen said, this is a major investment. It's a once-in-a-lifetime thing. So it felt that it wasn't appropriate to be part of the consent calendar. So I'm glad that it was pulled out. This is going to create about $10 billion worth of real estate in the San Jose area, assuming that the ballot passes. assuming that the ballot passes and we receive the amount of money which we are expected to receive. And it is also going to be creating some of the new things, new unusual things. It is also going to create probably a debt for every child, person, man, woman, senior, of $2,000 for every one of them, because if we have a $2.4 billion debt with a million population, that translates to about $2,000 of debt for every one of us. So I think it is important that we educate all the people, all the residents, so that they knowingly go into this ballot measure, because passing the resolution today is only the first step, as you said. The real stuff is going to happen on November 5th, when people go and vote for it. So I looked at the memo. I think it is our job to make sure that the people know where they can get additional information, and it is not there. And that's the reason I wanted it to be brought up to the attention of the people. A very, very significant item is coming. Please study it and see where the additional information is available. So today's meeting, having this discussion, helps us get to that point, because educated users, educated residents are going to make the right decision. And that's, my comment is that let's advertise as much as possible where additional information is available, so people come prepared on November 5th and hopefully vote in favor of that.
Great. Thank you, council member, and great point about committee engagement and education. Councilor Dwan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Cohen, for pulling the bond measure out of the consent calendar. I was very surprised that we tried to push it through a consent calendar where it was $20 billion. That's $20 billion of taxpayer money. Yes, it is a one-time infusion. We said that about many other bonds, right? Including the, you know, the Measure A, $1 billion infusion. And then we end up with the, with the state audit from Senator Dave Cortese with $300 million that's unaccounted for. So Clark, can you pull up my graphic, please? So as you can see there, our taxpayer are absolutely fatigued with every addition on, from, you name it, from flood library, Measure A, Measure H, many other tax onto our property taxes. A typical home in D7 assessed around $800,000 paid the following taxes, including bonds, multiple measure before year 2000, 12 schools, overlapping school bond, San Jose general obligation bond, countywide taxes, and many other, like transportation taxes, water bond. So anyway, my point is that how much more burden do we put on our taxpayer? $20 billion. That's, that's the city budget every year, including the county, and we still won't hit that $20 billion bonds. So I do have a question for staff, if the staff can clarify some of this stuff for me. Can you clarify the duration of tax increase and the bond repayment period?
Thank you, Councilmember Eric Solivan, Housing Director. To your question about the duration of the taxpayer period, I can't comment on that today, but I can certainly get those details and follow up with your office as to what the extent is over the period of the bonds.
And, and the bond repayment period, how long does it take to repay $20 billion?
Your typical issues for private activity bonds, which is what this will be, is usually on somewhere between a 15- to 30-year cycle, subject to a number of different conditions.
Give me the years. Let's not go into too many details, just give me the year. For example, you telling me you're putting up a $20 billion bond, and you don't know duration of the tax?
Well, the city is not putting up the bond. The BAFFA is putting up, and they're the issuer of the bond, subject to state regulation and their private activity bond issuance.
Right, but we're supporting it, right?
Well, the city council and the mayor are supporting it.
So how much would property tax increase if the bond passes? And let's say the, you know, we're being pretty generous at $800,000 home, which is probably a fixed upper. By the time you get through with assessment and everything, it'd be probably $1.5 million. How much, how much would property tax increase?
There's a total calculation that BAFFA has issued on their website and what the per parcel tax allocation would be. I don't have that information in front of me, but happy to follow up with your office with those details, as they have done the calculations for it.
Okay. My understanding that the ACA-1 would lower the voter approval from two-thirds to a majority, two-thirds majority to a simple 55% for the bond measure if approved. Can you verify on that?
I know that bill's been, going through the legislature. I can't comment from my position as a councilman.
I can comment on that, and Zane is on his way down, but in its current, in its current form, and what is being negotiated, this would move to a majority vote.
Yes, we can confirm, Zane Barnes, I never got mental relations, we can confirm that ACA-1 is currently being amended to remove special taxes, but it was, it looks at bonds and moving it from 60, or from two-thirds to 55%.
Thank you for that. And I, what is the percentage of CAF or administration fees once, you know, it is delivered to service provider and other organization?
I don't have that direct information. I don't have that direct information about what the breakup would be, but in the memo that was put forward, it is aligned with what BAFFA has outlined as the funding pots that are allowed.
And what is the oversight for, on the issuance and spending of these funds?
As I understand it, the issuance would be through BAFFA, and so BAFFA would have oversight, but the, as long as the, there's adherence to the expenditure plan, that would be encumbered through law.
Yeah, I, I'm very supportive of creating more affordable housing and get shelter for residents, but it's, it's just mind-boggling that what we keep taxing our taxpayer, right? And then, especially with the recent Measure A bond, and we're unaccounted for $300 million. So we have to, to get this out to the public and let people understand how much taxes, how long it will take to return on the bonds. Let's say at five and a half percent, normally it goes, we'll probably owe $40 billion plus, if you do the math. And I think we, as council members, should be fiscally responsible, and we have to stop taxing our residents, because we are, residents right now are struggling. The formulation was 30% of your income go to paying for your properties. Now it's going 50, 60, even 70. And people barely afford the food out there, and then here we are, we continue to tax people on that. And I hope that we, we rethink and get the numbers out there to the citizen, so that way they can make an educated decision. Thank you.
Councilmember, just to address your question, the duration of the bond is in the tax rate statement, which will go to voters. Each bond issuance goes for 35 years, and there will be multiple issuances, so the final bond will retire 35 years after the last issuance.
If the voters approve it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Zane. Appreciate that. Thank you, council member. Let me just make a couple of points, and then I'll turn to, I know other colleagues with hands up. One thing I just want to note, just so everybody's clear, is this would be a cross-the-nine-county Bay Area, and I think one of the advantages to going in regionally here is not just that we have a regional economy, and that people travel across the region, but that we pool resources from wealthier communities that historically have done a lot less on affordable housing and other solutions to homelessness. I want to get the Saratogas and Los Altos's and Marin Counties in on the game of funding solutions to ensuring affordable housing that's deed-restricted for our lowest-income residents, who provide essential, are essential parts of our community and are part of our essential workforce that's so commonly getting priced out of the region. So I think this notion of pooling and drawing from places in the county that have a lot of wealth but have not participated as much in constructing affordable housing and other solutions, let me make a second point on that. Part of the reason I support this is it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. It devotes substantial dollars to a range of solutions, preservation of existing units so that they aren't converted to market rate and then displaced the folks who are there. So preservation strategies, immediate alternatives to encampments. We can fund the work that we've talked about relative to being in compliance with our stormwater permit. We can fund safe sleeping, safe parking, interim shelter, congregate shelter, motel conversions with these dollars as well. It gives us flexibility in a range of solutions. It gets everybody pooled together in on the game of these solutions. So I think those are important points to make. That doesn't mean, again, to your point, to everybody's point here, the voters need to be well-informed. Ultimately, once the city takes a position, we don't use taxpayer dollars here to go, to go advocate for measures. That becomes, we put the information out in the public, and ultimately voters have to be informed and, and make those decisions, and we'll respect the will of the voters, of course. I do want to just note on the state audit, I think it's important to clarify, I'll turn to Lee Wilcox, and if we want to bring in IGR or others, that's fine, but I do just want to make sure it's clear in the public record, on the $300 million figure, I think we probably all saw and hopefully read the summary at least of the state audit, it's not the case that we have $300 million that's unaccounted for. We actually have the receipts on where every single dollar went. I think we can debate, did we, you know, was it the right mix of strategies? Did we get as much impact as we want? I think there are plenty of valid questions. Did we report to the public clearly enough along the way around where the dollars went and what the impact was? But it's not the case that it isn't accounted, I don't want people to be left with the impression that we lost $300 million. So Lee, could you just help clarify our, what the state audit did find?
I'm happy to. And yes, the state audit did not say we have $300 million unaccounted for. Actually, what it says is us and San Diego, as well as a host of other cities, need better methodology and framework to actually track investment to results in various programs, as well as do we have the right mix of strategies across our whole continuum of care to adequately address the crisis on the street? So it's more about the methodology and framework of tracking the performance, because we do have every cent accounted for.
Great. I think that's an important clarification. Okay, thank you, Lee. I have a few other colleagues with hands up. Let me turn to Councilmember Foley.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm actually very excited to see this measure come before us and have the voters have an opportunity to vote on it. It's, what I particularly like about it is that the money will be proportionally spent in the city and county that has the biggest impact, the biggest population. So that means we get the biggest share of the funds coming in, which is really important. Regarding paying for it, which is something to be considered, it will appear on property taxes based on your, your base value of your property or your assessed value, and not your fair market value, which is two different things. Unless you bought your house today, then they're the exact same things. But otherwise, it's based on whatever your tax base was when you purchased your property with increases as, over time, but never does it actually step up to fair market value. So if your property is worth $2 million today, as an example, but you only paid $1 million for it, your tax base or your bond is based on the million, so it's X percent times, times 100,000. So that's one thing. The other thing, having been involved in bonds at the school board level, we always have an oversight body, and the oversight body's job, as we have with Measure E, we have an oversight board here as well that watches and making, makes sure that the money is spent how it's supposed to be spent. But this is, all's, what we are doing is saying, if we approve it, and I'm assuming we're going to approve it today, approve supporting it today, taking a support position, is that, is just that. The voters then have the opportunity to say, yes, I want to increase taxes on, on myself, or no, I don't. And, and that's really critical. When we're looking at a budget that's coming before us next week, the next couple of weeks, and we're looking at the little Measure E dollars that we have to build affordable housing, this amount of money is a game-changer for affordable housing, and it means that we won't, at the council level, have to be nickel-and-diming that little pot of Measure E money in comparison to the bigger overall funds. So I'm, I'm very supportive of going, of having the voters to decide whether this is a valid use of funds. I personally think it is. I have my tax bill here too, Councilmember Dwan. I always carry it with me, just so I can take a look at it. But I have it, I actually have it today, because we're talking about sewers and other things, so just happen to have it with me. So, you know, it is something to be mindful of, because it will cause people's tax bills, property tax bills, to go up. But ultimately, it is for the good of the order. We will be able to build more affordable housing, which we know is desperately needed in this area. Thank you.
Thanks, council member. Councilor Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you. I concur with everything that's been said. I also wanted to note that, I don't have it on my screen anymore, but I think the tax bill, or someone's tax bill that was put on the screen earlier, I think it was not, not yours, Councilmember Foley, although I do want to see how much your house is worth. But, but no, but what I was going to suggest is, there was, there was a lot of items that were listed on that, and I remember former Councilmember Camus used to do this all the time. He'd lift, you know, put on the screen the tax bill, and I would say about more than 80% of the, of the line items on that tax bill you presented there are for schools. And so I just wanted to highlight that, that these aren't just miscellaneous things that were being taxed for. There, there you go. I think there were about, in the bottom section, about 21 there, about 16 of those are for local schools, which I think we all generally support, and we know that without us investing in those, that they, quite frankly, won't get the funding they need. And so I just wanted to lift that up. These aren't, these aren't, you know, to fund someone's vacation, if you will, but, you know, they're libraries, they're sewers, there's all these critical sort of infrastructure needs that I think are important to the city and to the residents. So just want to lift that up. And I'm also going to be, obviously, supporting this and think that getting adequate funding to build more housing is such, such crucial importance to, I'm sure, the same families that are, that voted to support some of the bonds and other things on here related to schools and their children, because really, I mean, having kids living at home, I, as many folks up here, I'm sure, and many folks in the audience, realize that we actually need to build the housing if we want our kids to eventually move out of the house. And so, so I think it goes hand in glove with some of the taxes that we pay towards school and our children. Thank you.
Thanks, council member. And Councilor Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. And thanks, thanks for those, those points about the, what's on the tax, on the property tax bill, including, for example, the fact that we, residents pay for their garbage through the tax bill, but if otherwise, it would be a separate bill they receive, so it's just the way we, we account for it. I want to, we're not here to discuss ACA-1, obviously, but, you know, right now, school bonds require 55% to pass, and the question is whether other bonds that are for really important public investment also should be at 55%. And so this would put bonds all in alignment with what, what is required for school bonds. And of course, as you said, public should be aware of the numbers, they will be, and that'll be obviously part of this discussion going forward, but just, just to make sure we're aware of them, the, because it's a $20 billion bond, the actual cost would be $19 per $100,000 assessed value. So if you have a $1 million assessed home value on your home, you'd pay $190 a year. It'll be up to the voters to decide, is that a reasonable investment for the billions of dollars of affordable housing that we will build that will make a huge impact on places for their kids to live, their grandkids to live, for us to find places for lower-income folks to be able to continue to stay here, for working-class people to be able to not, to avoid multiple-hour commutes, the ability for us to address our, our problem with homelessness. So that'll be up to the voters, obviously. So that'll be up to the voters, obviously. And I also just want to point out about the multiplier effect of these bond dollars. So when we put it, this $20 billion is not paying for all the units. This $20 billion usually is about a $200,000 to $300,000 investment per unit that has about a 3 to 4X multiplier for other sources of funding that builds the units. And so this is a hugely beneficial measure that will really multiply the dollars that we get out of this bond. And because a good portion of that money will actually be in the form of loans from the central, what we set up as sort of a central bank for the loans from the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority, money will be coming back through repayment of those loans and money will be used multiple times over the years. And so this is a really, really impactful way to invest dollars in affordable housing. And in fact, there will continue to be investment through the way this will be set up for years after these bonds are actually paid off. And so I think it's, from our perspective, this is a really good investment of $190 a year for a $1 million home in our area and why I support this bond measure.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Duane?
I appreciate all your information. And Pam, it's a good thing that you got that house 34 years ago. But I know a lot of people who bought the houses now, in the last five or 10 years, they owe enormous amount of taxes. And I just want to, you know, in this memorandum, 50% go to affordable housing, 28%, I believe, go to helping our unsheltered residents, 15% for preservation, and 5% to get legal services for those renter, if you will. And so why we're dictating exactly how many percent go to what right now, because as the economy changes, as the world turns, why are we dictating that 10, 20 years from now? It changes. So remember, the bond in year 2000, we still paint on that. And then this bond, it's going to take us 35 years. If you do the math, that's about 5.5% or 5.4%. It equates to $44.5 billion that our taxpayer have to pay over the next 35 years. So these are things that we have to consider. I am totally, again, I just want to make it very clear. I am very supportive of affordable housing and getting our unsheltered residents off their feet into shelters. But I want to make sure that we are fiscally responsible for taxpayer money. That's the bottom line. I'm not disagreeing with any of your thought process. I just want us to be very aware. You know, the money didn't come from thin air. It doesn't come with zero obligation. We, as a taxpayer, going to owe that for the next 35 years on top of everything else. And remind you, the school bond, that part of the taxing there does affect the renters just as much as property owner. Again, I'm very supportive of affordable housing. I'm very supportive of sheltering our unsheltered residents. But we got to be mindful and fiscally responsible of our taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember. And I think you raised a lot of important points, and there'll certainly be a lot of discussion out in the community. I think especially the point that we, through the way we have structured our property taxes, we punish new homeowners, young people who want to buy now. It is extremely cost prohibitive. So I think there's a really good point to make there, which is a function of state law. But in terms of the allocations, just since you asked the question, those allocations are laid out by the enabling legislation. I wanted to make clear on the 28%, and I think this is part of the spirit of the memo, that because those are flexible funds, that we will make our best effort to first use them for solutions that can accelerate the rate at which we create alternatives to unmanaged encampments. Because those are the flexible dollars. The other categories are laid out and dictated by the enabling legislation. So we don't get to determine those. Those were set by the state, and that's because it's a regional measure that would be standardized across all nine counties if it passed. Okay, Councilman Batra?
I think that was a great discussion and good points brought out by Councilmember Duane. And the item which I am most concerned about it, that this is a hugely impactful as well as a hugely costly item. How are we going to ensure the education of the residents so that they are able to make an informed decision? This discussion, which we had the benefit of, how are we going to get this information out to the residents and the voters? So I don't see anything in any of the documentation here which will talk about how do we get the education. And that would be my biggest concern on it, is that they let the voters vote and indicate how they want their money to be spent. We are all supportive of the fact that we want the affordable homes, but they should know what the impact on them is. And that's the piece which I would be deeply concerned about it. And I don't know how to get that into the system here so that the proper education happens. The kind of analysis which we just went through, how will they get the benefit of that kind of analysis?
Yeah, and that's really, first and foremost, a question for the Secretary of State and the registrars of voters. That's what the ballot, for truly impartial official information, that is the responsibility of the registrars and Secretary of State and what you get in the ballot guides and other legislative analysis from the LAO or other sources. Bafa and the, well, MTC, if you go to the website, has analysis that I believe is also factual and accurate for residents. Ultimately, this is not a measure that we're putting on the ballot as a city. It's not a city measure. It's a regional measure. And there will no doubt be campaigns that will put out information. There will be, as is referenced here, it will be important that we are working with organizations to enable forums where residents can get information. But the impartial analysis and the data that you're referring to has got to be provided by the entities that I listed earlier because there will be a campaign. And that's not something that we can use public dollars to go fund, a for or against campaign. Okay, thank you. I think we've exhausted the council questions and comments. We have a motion. We're going to turn, now this was a consent item that was polled, so we did all of our deliberation first. Now we're going to go to public comment. Tony?
Thank you. I have several cards for this item. When I read your name, please come on down. First person to the microphone can just go ahead and say their name and start speaking, so it's no particular order. I have Dixie Lyra Bous, Hector Hernandez, Elizabeth Madrigal. I think it starts with the letter A, Martinez, Natali Martinez. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Dixie Lyra Bous, and I am with Eden Housing. I'm here on behalf of our organization to thank you and support the mayor, the vice mayors, Councilmembers Jimenez, Cohen, Davis's memorandum of support for the Bay Area Regional Affordable Housing Bond. I'm a resident of Santa Clara County and will gladly pay 190. We firmly believe that the housing crisis exists across all areas of the housing spectrum, our unhoused neighbors, seniors, veterans, families, moderate and unrestricted households. We applaud your recognition by way of creating a broad range of funding opportunities to create housing for all. With our letter of support, we outlined and suggested a few guidelines for future consideration. We'd ask that you might consider broadening the definition of preservation to ensuring that those properties that are currently under affordable housing restriction remain safe and habitable for many, many more years without significant additional investment. We also suggest that you might reconsider or consider target goals that go across the entire spectrum of the funding instead of on a project-by-project basis. And finally, whatever we create together, please allow for the flexibility of the Housing Department to adapt quickly to housing not only the market conditions but also the financing conditions out there in the market. Eden Housing stands with the City of San Jose, and we will commit our resources to help get this bond initiative passed in November. We are ready to get to work now to ensure that we are ready to hit the ground running when this initiative passes. Thank you for your leadership and your grit.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Lali Martinez. We're Somos Mayfair. And we're looking forward to moving this from a regional initiative to a full-fledged campaign where we must all come together in order to secure a win, further opportunities for affordable housing here in San Jose and through the Bay Area. This initiative is not just an opportunity. It is a necessity. With 4.5 billion designated for South Bay, it is imperative that we act decisively to combat our housing crisis. Thank you for your attention for this matter. I anticipate your immediate action and look forward to seeing our collective effort translate into a tangible solution for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Waskar Castro and Matt King.
Good afternoon. My name is Hector Hernandez, Community of Aluna. I'm here to speak in support of this resolution so the city can move forward and support the regional housing measure. A commitment from this council effort has significant regional implications as this effort can span nine counties, and it will take everyone's effort throughout the region in order for this measure to win and for everybody in the region to be able to be helpful with these funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Elizabeth Madrigal, and I'm a policy manager at Mid Penn Housing. We are a nonprofit developer, owner and manager of affordable housing and on-site residence services. Since 1970, we have developed over 9,400 homes for low-income residents all throughout Northern California. And in San Jose specifically, our portfolio includes 14 properties comprising over 1,200 units. We're very excited to have a 203-unit project in our pipeline. And you all went through what this measure is going to do wonderfully, which is mostly what my comment was about. But I really just want to reiterate the importance of this bond and what it'll do, especially for San Jose, how much San Jose and its residents stand to gain from it. So we really appreciate the support you all have had for this. And I do want to note that we do have a couple of considerations for the council, among those being the importance of affordability targeting, procedural certainty and transparency, as well as flexibility within the funding tranches to align with changing community needs, and the fundamental principle of concurrent investments, prioritizing permanent housing, as we believe that is a long-term solution to ending homelessness. Once again, we're committed to doing this work with you and really just thank you for all you've done for this, especially to our advocacy partners, city staff, council and mayor, and all you're doing to engage in this dialogue together. And really just believing that with all of us working together, we can make this regional bond a success, not just in November, but for years to come. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Gabby Chavez-Lopez and Matthew Reed.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Waskar Castro, Director of Housing and Transportation Justice at Working Partnerships USA. We stand alongside partners before you all today in urging your support for the recommendation and the resolution for you all to support this regional housing measure. Many of you all sit on various regional bodies, the ABAGs, the Bafa boards, MTCs, there's a lot. And then some of you have already taken early action, actually supporting the concept of placing a regional measure on the ballot. And so I would like to recognize those, Councilmembers Torres, Councilmembers Jimenez, Councilmembers Ortiz, for taking those early steps to recognize the importance of this opportunity before you all today. We look forward to seeing the entire council make that statement and continue that support. This discussion here locally has regional implications. This is going to be a nine-county major initiative that's going to take everyone doing their part and working together to ultimately get this over the finish line and secure these funds to work on a broad array of critical housing solutions. We look forward to continuing to do that work alongside you all and are very excited to see how you all continue to partner and support this initiative past this juncture. With that, we urge your support and look forward to that continued work going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. I'd also like to call down Tamara Chavez and Kira Kazanthis.
Hi, good afternoon. Matt King with Sacred Heart Community Service. I was glad to hear several people on this body recognize what a big, big deal this is. It's four-plus-billion dollars, the entire region coming together. We often feel like we're going it alone down here, and this time, we're finally not going it alone. And I would hope that would help everybody get excited about this, to pull together. This is going to be very, very hard to get this over the finish line. We have a lot of work to do. Feel like that work starts today with getting an 11-nothing vote this afternoon to signal to all of our partners across the region that San Jose is all in. And we're going to do everything we can to get this $20 billion for everybody and the four-plus-billion dollars for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Gabby Chavez-Lopez, and I'm the Executive Director of the Latina Coalition of Silicon Valley. I'm also a homeowner in District 6, so I will happily also pay the additional tax for the collective of all of my neighbors. I'm here today to speak in strong support of this resolution, which will enable our city to advance the regional housing measure. This measure represents a significant opportunity to allocate substantial resources toward a variety of essential housing solutions that our community desperately needs. The Latina Coalition of Silicon Valley is deeply committed to advocating for equitable housing policies that assure that all residents, regardless of their background, have access to a safe, stable and affordable home. We ultimately can't meet our mission otherwise. I don't think any nonprofit in Silicon Valley can. Our city is currently at an inflection point. We see that they are faced with significant budget constraints, making it challenging to meet the needs of our residents solely through local resources. However, this constraint also presents a unique opportunity. We can reimagine how we address shared housing challenges by partnering in innovative ways with neighboring cities, counties and regional agencies. This regional housing measure is timely and necessary and is a long time coming. Those of us working in the space know this. By supporting this measure, we acknowledge the interconnectedness, nature of our housing challenges and the need for a unified approach in solving them. Moreover, the success of any housing initiative hinges on deep community engagement, and it is essential that we involve residents, local organizations and community leaders in this process. The Latina Coalition of Silicon Valley is dedicated to fostering meaningful participation from the communities most affected by housing instability. Their voices must be heard and their needs must be prioritized as we develop and implement any housing solutions. In conclusion, I urge you to support the resolution and enable our city to play a proactive role in the regional housing measure. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, mayor and councilman Matthew Reed. I'm the Director of Policy at Silicon Valley at Home. I will just say the substance of the comments from council stole a lot of my fire, so I'll be brief. We are here to support the memo from the mayor, the vice mayor and councilmembers Cohen, Davis and Jimenez, which is proposing this action of support for the bond. We want to acknowledge there's been a lot of work. It's been a busy couple of weeks and a couple of months, and it really is through what I would like to commend as a collaborative process that we've gotten to this point. I guess the important thing for me to say is that this action needs to be a first step. We really need unanimous support from this body, and we need a shared commitment. So we're, as co-chairs, co-leads for the county, I'd like to formally invite you all into the effort and really look forward into the, into the effort and really look forward to working with you all. It, it can't be understated how important San Jose is in making a statement to the region. We need to join with the other big cities to state a commitment to this. You all who serve on these multiple bodies have done a great job of representing the interests of Santa Clara County. We need to make sure that folks know that we are on board. I also want to just briefly acknowledge that this was structured specifically to address a broad range of housing needs in our communities. And we believe, I think, along with most of the community, that we really need to have a continuum of response to those needs, which includes investing in interim solutions, keeping people in their homes.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Hi. I'm Kira Kazanthis, Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits. I'm also a homeowner in D3. Speaking in support of this resolution so that the city can move forward in supporting the regional housing bond, like others have said, this investment of $4.5 billion in housing solutions in our county is going to be an incredible shot in the arm, not only for people who are housing insecure, but for the health of our entire community. We're especially excited about the proposal to robustly engage the community. This language really brings to life the commitment and new, in the new charter language that our electorate passed in Measure I, where we get everyone to the table, including people with lived experience of housing instability and homelessness, so we can get their great ideas and their input. The nonprofit housing community stands ready to support this campaign, to pass the bond. I wanted to say one thing in response to Councilmember Duane's comments. I agree. We should spend this money really well and really carefully in a way that is transparent to our community. I think the first step in that is putting it in front of the voters and getting this thing passed, so I can put in my $120, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker?
Good afternoon. I'm Tamara Chavez, Regional Director of PATH. We would like to stress our support for the regional bond measure and for the spending plan outlined here today. For our record as being one of the largest and most impactful service providers in California, we know that only housing can solve homelessness. We are thankful to see affordable housing development and preservation prioritized in this plan, along with a significant, much-needed investment to build out our regional shelter network. We can only be successful if there is fluidity throughout the pipeline. I would also like to thank Mayor Mahan for working closely with advocates and service providers on this thoughtful plan. PATH looks forward to working with all of you to get this bond measure passed in the fall. Thank you.
Back to council.
All right. Well, thank you to everyone who spoke during public comment. Really appreciate all of the input. We had a pretty thorough council discussion. I don't see any other hands, so Tony, let's vote.
I'm still waiting. Oh, there we go. Motion passes unanimously?
Wonderful. Great. Thank you all very much. Okay. That wraps up the consent calendar. We're now on to land use consent. Item 10.1A, city-initiated rezoning. This is additional rezoning in response to Senate Bill 1333. We've had these come before the council from time to time. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Great. Thank you. Tony, do we have any public comment?
No cards.
Okay.
Who is the motion on that?
Jimenez with a second from Ortiz. Okay. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you. All right. We are on to item 3.1, report of the city manager.
Thank you, mayor and city council. I do not have a report today.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer. On to item 3.3, renewal of the Willow Glen Community Benefit Improvement District. And I have a script. That's right. Nora was about to remind me. You're going to have to hear me deliver a script three times today. Let me pull it up in my binder here. Sort of like notes for a play or something. Okay, here we go. Mayor, that's my section. All right. Item 3.3 is the public hearing and special election on the expansion and renewal of the Willow Glen Community Benefit District and a levy of assessments on those parcels within the district. The council will open the public hearing on this item in order to hear and consider all testimony by interested persons related to the renewal and expansion of the district. During the hearing, the city clerk will begin to collect ballots and commence tabulation. The city council will also consider authorizing the city clerk to vote in favor of district expansion and renewal as the owner of property within the district. At the close of the public hearing, council will direct all property owners who have not already submitted their ballot to submit their ballots to the city clerk for tabulation. No ballots will be accepted after the conclusion of the public hearing. I would now like to open the public hearing and ask for public testimony.
I have no cards.
We have no public testimony. Okay. The clerk will now report the results of the election?
Not yet. You're gonna, I, I can't count the ballots until we close. The next part of the script is asking them to approve.
Oh, it's double-sided. Let me turn that over. This is quite a script. It's four pages. Okay, double-sided. Go to the backside of page one. "I will now ask the council to consider approving a motion authorizing the city clerk to vote in favor of district renewal, expansion, and levy of assessments on city property within the district." Thank you, council member. "At this time, we are preparing to close the public hearing. Are there any property owners who wish to submit a ballot to the clerk? If so, you must submit your ballots now."
I also need to vote. I need to click the vote for you guys before we go and open the ballots.
And before closing the public hearing?
Yeah, we should have voted right after the motion and second.
That I don't see here in my notes, but let's vote.
That, that's in my version of the script. We have a lot of scripts today.
Okay.
I'm still waiting on three votes. I've got three people absent, so motion passes.
Okay. Great.
Eight to three with Kamay, Jimenez, and Candela absent.
Okay. "At this time, we are preparing to close the public hearing. Are there any property owners who wish to submit a ballot to the clerk? If so, you must submit your ballots now."
I see nobody coming forward.
Thank you, Tony. We will close the public hearing.
Case.
"At this time, we will conclude the special election. The city clerk will not accept any further ballots from this point forward." Does the clerk need more time to tabulate the ballots?
Yes. We will probably take the rest of the meeting to, to tabulate them. My staff has the ballots, so we'll have three people watching over each other. They're going to go in the back, count the ballots, and I'll let you know when they're done. But we can move forward to the next items.
Okay, so we'll move forward to the next item, and Tony, when you're ready, we will put this item, we will come back to this item.
Yes.
And I will come back to the script, as Nora just informed me. All right. Putting the script back in my binder for safekeeping. There we go. I got it. Okay. Well, then we will move on to item 3.4. This is the maintenance district budget reports for fiscal year 2024, 2025. And I don't believe there's a staff presentation, so we will entertain a motion. Great. Thank you. Tony, do we have public comment on item 3.4?
I have no cards.
Okay. Thank you. We are on to item 6.1, actions related to the regional wastewater facility main entrance improvements project.
We need, we need to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm moving along. Gosh, I'm flying through these too quickly. Let's vote. I'm sorry.
And just note, I have scripts for items 6.2, 3, and 4, so we have more scripts coming.
Tony, would you register my I vote for the previous item? This is Councilwoman Candela's. I was in the back.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. So, item 3.4, motion passes unanimously with Jimenez and Batra absent.
Okay. And just for the record, was there anyone else who wanted to register their vote for item 3.3? Councilwoman Candela's?
Kamay.
Vice mayor?
Yes, on 3.3.
I.
Okay. And we're still missing one. Okay. So, item 6.1 passes. We're on to item 6.2, sewer service and use charges and storm sewer service charges effective July 1, 2024. It's because I already read it. I'd started it. Okay. Promise I'm going to get this. Item 6.1, actions related to the 9895 regional wastewater facility main entrance improvements project?
I have.
No presentation. Do we have a motion? I'll move approval. Do you have a card? Let's go to public comment.
It looks like Don Gordon or maybe Dan Gordon. Dan, come on down.
Is that on 6.1 or 6.2? I'm sorry. We're on item 6.1. I misspoke.
Regional wastewater? Oh, you want wastewater fees?
I believe Dan's comment is on item 6.2, sewer charge and use. Is that correct? Okay. That was my mistake. So, no public comment then on 6.1?
No. No public comment.
Okay. We'll come back to council for questions, comments, and a motion. Councilor Duane?
Thank you, mayor. Do we, we have staff at the wastewater solution. Can I answer some questions, please?
Carrie's here. I see Carrie coming down.
So, thank you. I drive by the, the water pollution control area a lot because I go out to the Abysso Marina. I look at the gate and I look at the shack. How do we constitute, can you give me a little more detail that why it costs $9 million? Just, that's a chain-link fence, that is what I see, number one. Number two, it's, it's a security shack, according to the memorandum.
Thank you, councilmember. Carrie Romina, Director of Environmental Services. I believe in the memo, there is a map showing the project area, and there's two project areas, so there's two, two entrances. The shack that you do see is, is quite outdated, and there are staff in there most of the day. And additionally, we need some added security to, to kind of get people in and out of the building on a regular basis. So, with the paving and the structure and the additional upgrades, unfortunately, it did total nine million.
Yeah, I know that shack was, was built in 1988, and I live out in Abysso in '84, so I kind of realize how long that shack been there. But, and it, and in the memorandum, it's also stated ADA compliance. I, I was a little confused with the ADA compliance. Were you?
I'm sorry. I couldn't hear you.
In, in your memorandum, there, there's ADA compliance. Can you elaborate on that?
I'm sorry. I'm not, I don't have the memo in front of me. Is, I'm not understanding the question. I'm sorry.
Sorry, your question is on the ADA compliance work?
Yes, because we're talking about if, if the gate, we're talking about expanding the street, repaving the street. Normally, someone who is ADA, they'll, they'll drive to the building, and, and there is ADA access, because I look at the overview. So, how does that apply? The, the gate and, and the shack apply to ADA compliance?
I'm so sorry. I thought you were talking about something totally different. I am not the ADA expert. I think Public Works is, is the ADA expert, and I'm hoping Matt can provide some additional detail on that.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman. Matt Lesch, Director of Public Works. So, anytime you're modifying any facility, the path of travel and any accessibility needs to be taken into consideration, whether it's coming from the parking lot or access from the road. And so, all, so anytime we're touching any facilities, whether it's a park, city hall, or at the regional wastewater gate or entrance, it would be a consideration. So, ADA would be a consideration in any project that we're modifying to make things current. It's part of the current building code that we're applying.
So, this is consideration, meaning, I, I understand if the shack has had to have ADA ramp access, just in case someone who is disabled want to work as a security. But widen the street, and that's part of the ADA, too?
Well, no, the street modifications might not be part of the ADA, might be part of the project scope. And so, I don't have the project plans in front of me to elucidate what specific things are engendering any other part of it. Even if we're building a shack, let's, a building for which staff is going to be housed to perform their operations, access, so that whole building inside needs to be ADA compliant. Also, anywhere they're coming to and from, any of the restroom facilities, anything would need to be, have the current code ADA applied to it. And so, it's not just the shack or even the road necessitating ADA. It could be any other factors.
So, so part of this funding is, is to remodel part of the buildings versus just the, the road access and the gate?
Again, I don't have the project plans in front of me to, to make sure I understand exactly which thing is causing the ADA, but that is part of the scope of modifying both the roadway and the building and the gates.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Cohen?
Yeah, and I guess I don't need you to walk back down, Carrie. Oh, you're there still. Okay. As I understand this project, this is, this is not just a road and a gate, but also the kind of changing the front entrance and making it more of an inviting entrance to the, to the facility, including some building modifications and other things. Is that correct?
Thank, thank you, councilmember. Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm going to move approval of this contract.
Okay. Thank you. We've already gone to public comment. Okay. And there were no, that's right, and there were no cards on this one, so we're ready to vote.
Motion passes unanimously with Torres and Ortiz absent.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We are now on to item 6.2. Apologies for the confusion. This is the sewer service and use charges and storm sewer service charges effective July 1, 2024.
Okay, so I have.
There's no presentation, so we'll go to public comment first.
I have a script, and then we'll go to public comment.
Okay.
And I have a script for two, 6.2, 6.3, and 6.4, just to give you a heads up.
Good to know.
"Subsequent to ESD supplemental memorandum dated June 4, 2024, the city clerk's office has recert, has received 31 additional sewer service and use charge protests. Therefore, the total number of valid written protests is 627 for the proposed sewer and use charge." Now, we go to speakers. So, I'm going to call Dan Gordon.
Mayor and city council, thanks for this moment to be able to speak towards the proposed sewer wastewater fee increases. I feel like I'm representing the few manufacturers left in San Jose. Could be a lot fewer after this. These are dire increases. I, I received the letter, you know, on April 9th, explaining what, what was going to happen. The letter says I will be subject to an increase anywhere from zero to 38 percent. That's how our city is going to run? That's intolerable. I need to know what I'm facing. So, I went through the calculations based on the increases that I've itemized in each of the categories from which we are billed as an industrial user. The increases that I came up with were around 48 percent. The letter I received, using an example of what I thought was Gordon Beirish, in which I received another email this morning confirming this is what I should expect, a 10 percent increase, which is still much higher than the rate of inflation and a tremendous burden on our ability to stay as a, as a vibrant manufacturer of beverages shipping throughout, you know, the West Coast in the U.S. So, I'm, I'm facing some detrimental facts moving forward. I've just recently, right before getting here, got a revised one saying, oh yeah, that was a pro forma based on a typical industrial user, not necessarily Gordon Beirish. We think your increase will be about 28 percent. So, just to put this in perspective, that's two employees I'm going to have to fire, or find out how to rationalize, out of a staff of about 58, in order to stay status quo. And I'm already operating in a very, very efficient way. So, I don't know how these proposed in- So, I don't know how these proposed increases are being equitably distributed amongst all the users, but certainly a 0 to 38% variance intolerance level is intolerable. And, and I'm asking the city council to postpone any decision on this until doing.
Well. Thank you. Okay, the total of all written protests during the public protest period, together with the speaker protesting the rate change today, represents less than 1% of all customers impacted by the change in the sewer service and use charge. Therefore, council may consider staff's recommendation for the sewer service and use charge increases. Back to you.
Okay, thank you. Coming back to the council, let me turn to Vice Mayor Kamai first.
I guess I have a question for Carrie, in terms of the variability, you know, the, you know, I mean, it's understandable, you know, just, just having that wide. You know, can you clarify in terms of, from zero to 38 seems like a, a great variation?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Carrie Ramnau, Director Environmental Services. The variability for monitored industries such as Gordon Beersh is, is so broad, because it depends on a number of variables. So, based on the type of equipment we are rehabilitating, and the type of discharge that they're, they're giving us each particular period, that impacts the total rate that they get. So, whereas single family and multifamily get a fixed charge regardless of how much they send to us, the monitored industries get a customized bill, which may or may not be preferable, but it, it is how we do our rate model. And so, depending on how much of a particular material they send, our bill is, is rolled up based on their actual discharge. And so, for this year, the, the rate impact has a very broad range.
I, I guess, you know, it'd be interesting to be able to work with, I mean, we have such a small number of manufacturers, that, you know, in terms of creating a little bit more certainty, instead of the variability. And, and I don't know if that's already happening, but it sounds like there's quite a, a swing in the numbers. And, I don't know, you know, as a former small business person, I, I know how difficult it can be without the certainty. And certainly, if you can work with these manufacturers, I, I just, I just think that at least knowing kind of where they're gonna land might be extremely helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. You know, Carrie, I, I also have a concern, as, as Dan raised, about how we're communicating these, and I, I heard your point. But I'm curious, as we look at our customer service values and standards, and try to improve, improve the experience our customers have, whether they're residents, businesses, how do we do better than just sending people this very formal, legalistic letter that says, your rates are gonna go up 0 to 38%? I mean, that's just, that, that has a chilling effect on business. I mean, that, that gets local businesses, small businesses, our manufacturers we're desperately trying to hold on to, because they, they create good middle-class jobs in our city, that injects uncertainty and fear. And I'm, I'm curious how we think we can improve that, and as we redesign the way we communicate with our customers as a city, what do you see as opportunities to reduce that uncertainty? I'll talk about the actual rates in a moment, but just the communication side of this, it feels to me like we can do better.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree, clearly, you know, Gordon Beersh is not the, the best experience we can do. And so, but with that, I mean, the rates are not just the environmental services department, so it is departments across the city, and including Public Works, Transportation, and, and certainly the manager's office. So, there's many departments working together on this, with the budget office sort of settling on where those rates will land. And then, and then my department sends out the communication. Prop 218 has specific requirements in terms of sharing the, the whys of the increase. But, to, I think, directly answer your question of what the heck can we do better? I think it is right along the questioning of the Vice Mayor as well, in terms of that, that industrial sector and the monitored industry, and helping them better understand what exactly that means to them, so that they are able to weigh in. And so, what I can do is commit that next year, we'll, we'll spend a lot more time on the monitored industries, and we will figure out a way to, to narrow that gap a bit, in terms of the 0 to whatever percent increase. I don't have an answer today, but, but I certainly can commit to, it won't be the same message next year.
Yeah, I appreciate, I'm glad to hear that, I mean, I think there's a few things I think we should think about on just the communication front. I mean, one is, to what extent can we work with our finance department to pre-calculate and give, give certainty, if it passes, this is what, is what we'll assess? Just, I mean, to what extent can we have the formula, do the math, and say, if this, it hasn't passed yet, this is proposed, but if it passes, this will be the impact on your business, we're just gonna give you certainty. It's kind of, you know, like we want to move toward, and I think the council's expressed, on developer fees, just being able to say upfront, we're gonna run the numbers, these are the fees on the books, if your application's accepted by this date, this is what your fees are gonna look like. You know, so just giving greater certainty. I think there's also maybe segmenting businesses and having different ranges for different subsectors, and being able to give, have fewer people get such a wide range. Maybe there are some where the, where the, the fee increase is gonna be higher, and we need to explain to them, and customize, and sort of, you know, target our communication to different subgroups based on their situation. But to have such a broad range across so many different businesses, I think, again, is just not particularly business friendly. On the fees themselves, so that's, that's on communication, I think there's a lot more to be said on communication, but just in the spirit of moving the conversation along. It seemed to me in my, as I was reviewing, I could be wrong, that there, on this particular fee, was maybe no increase last year, and then an average increase of 9% this year. And if that's true, I guess I'd want to ask, could we smooth these out, so that it's more like 4.5% each year? And I know you, you mentioned the prop 218 requirements, but can we have this be less of a yo-yo? Where, because people, we don't get any credit in the year where it doesn't go up, and people don't notice. And then the year when it goes up 9% on average, and for some businesses, 20% or more, it, it, it's shocking, it's unexpected, and, and really, you know, is, is hard for business owners. So, to what extent can we do a better job of smoothing these costs?
Mayor, that's a question for the budget office. Again, I don't make the rate increase recommendations, and, and I'm not a marked person that says what goes forward and what doesn't. So, I, I'm not in a position to answer that.
Okay. Did somebody else answer that?
I'll jump in here as the city manager. So, with the rate increases, I think that the budget office does try to smooth it out to the possible, they are in consultation with ESD. And, and until we know what all the proposals are that go into the proposed budget each year, it's hard to do an early prediction of what the rate increases will be. And so, there is attempts to try to smooth it, but also, we are trying to be mindful of Prop 218, and not charge somebody for services that, that money's not needed there, and then have that held in fund balance when it's not needed right away. So, it's a careful balancing act, but we'll, you know, I'll make sure the budget office really is looking at that even closer with ESD in the coming years.
Thank you, Jennifer, yeah, I, I think, I know it's, it's not gonna be a perfect science, we're never gonna have total certainty in 4.5% every year, and what, but I just, I, I really think making an effort to think in a multi-year timeframe, and space things out, so that it's a smoother curve and less choppy, is, is going to be beneficial to businesses and more predictable. So, I'd like, I'd really like to encourage us to try to approach it that way, looking multi-year. And, and then finally, you know, are all the costs, which of the inputs that are driving the fee increase are have-to-haves versus nice-to-haves? Which are legally required, which are state mandated, versus things we'd like to do, but don't have to be absolutely legally mandated to be done this year? I mean, I, I think the council would benefit from having more insight into which of these do we have no choice about, and we, we have to do it, because it's state law, for example, versus things where we want to do it, but maybe there's a value judgment we need to make around, if this is adding 2% to the, to the fees, and so it's seven instead of nine, maybe we're okay with waiting another year to do it. So, does that make sense? How do we get better visibility into, when we have fees that are, that are threatening to push our manufacturers out of town?
Again, Mayor, the, the costs are not solely in my department.
Sure, I'm directing that to the administration, so whoever it is.
And when my staff and I are making recommendations in terms of the regional wastewater facility, we are looking at rate smoothing, and we are going out and getting bonds, et cetera. I think, I think it's, I think it's the budget office that, that needs to answer that kind of question, because we are looking at, at rate stability.
Okay. It's not a super satisfying answer. Maybe we should wait a week to hear from the, more from the budget office, let me go to Councilor Foley.
Thank you, Mayor, actually, that was one of the things I was going to ask. I'm, I'm a little confused, so we're, this proposal keeps the residential rates the same.
No residential rates go up 9%?
Okay. I'm looking at Attachment B.
I think she might be referring to storm.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Storm is zero. You're correct, Councilmember.
So, Attachment A? No, that's right, that's, okay. So, that's fine. My question basically is, what, some of these fees to the commercial market are increasing, and others are decreasing. Can you tell me what influences an increase versus a decrease?
Thank you, yes, it, it depends on the, the type of discharge, and, and how the costs are spread amongst the parameters as per our rate model. And so, it's different for, for each type of discharge. So, if we're working on more of the solids type work, and you're discharging more solids, then there's, there's an additional cost there, from a wastewater standpoint. From a collection system standpoint, those are more fixed costs that spread across, more evenly across all, all parameters.
Okay. I'm not sure I understand that, so what's the, this is a, a lot more complicated, I think, than, than I thought coming in. When I read the memo, it seemed pretty straightforward, but listening to Dan, it, and the variation of the quote given to him, first of all, that's a very difficult communication, and how he's going to figure out, it's gonna be 0 or 38% is one matter. But when I look at the, the costs of, for example, a meat packer goes up by 6.97%, a soft drink bottler, 10.69%. I don't see a brewery here, so I'm not sure what a brewery is related to here, but a winery is 24.69%. So, is that going to affect some of our smaller wineries and their ability to function? I guess my overall concern is the increase in taxes for these businesses, without really understanding how the charge came to be increased or decreased. And what is the risk, or what, if we don't adopt this today, is that, is there a problem with that?
My understanding is that the, the rates are part of our budget process, and so, I think if, if they don't get adopted this month, then, then I think we have a problem putting them on the tax rolls, but Jennifer, would you add?
Yeah, that would be correct, and they're, these are part of the proposed budget to fund the fund balance and all the activities, as we need to keep certain reserves in these funds, and the capital budget program as well. So, it's baked into the budget, and then it takes time to put them on the, on the property tax rolls. And so, this is why this comes like, you know, a week or so earlier than you've, than you're normally doing the budget. So, these have all been noticed, and they're part of that. We do have our budget director coming to can provide, answer some questions, so you can make your decisions. But they are carefully thought about, just like all of our fees and charges are throughout the budget, as part of keeping our budget in balance and healthy.
Here's, is this Jim, the budget director right now?
Here he comes. So, you might have to.
Timing's perfect.
He made it.
You might have to repeat your question.
Okay.
For him as well.
So, so Jim, what is the risk if we don't adopt this today, and we postpone it maybe a week?
Jim, this is item 6.2, hopefully you were briefed on the way down.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So, Jim Shannon, City's Budget Director. So, I believe the process for the, these rates would be for, I think they require a second reading, so I think if we would delay that, then we would, we would not have the resources, we're not gonna be able to have those rates be effective, I think, for the beginning of the fiscal year. There's also some timing, I think, because they go on the property tax, I'm not 100% certain about, about this, but there is some coordination with the county that needs to happen to make sure that those rates can go on the rolls. And so, I think we are at risk then of not having enough revenue to offset the projected costs, which would put sort of, you know, the operations in jeopardy.
Okay. All right. Thank you, I, I appreciate you running down here for that. I'm, I'm still not sure how I, I feel about this, so I guess I'll listen to other colleagues as to how they are thinking about this particular issue. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor, and Jim, if you don't mind, I might reiterate a few questions I had, if you don't mind joining here, maybe in the box, and then, then I'll turn to other colleagues. Just quickly, I don't know how much you may or may not have caught, Jim, but I, I mean, my, my general point is that I, I really just, I, I don't think it's acceptable for us to send a letter to a range of, of businesses, and again, let's keep in mind the context. We are very housing-heavy, we are, we are, we have said consistently for years as a city, our primary strategy here is to bring more jobs and improve our, our jobs to housing ratio. We send a letter that says you've got a, you've got a range of fees coming from 0 to 38%. I think that's shocking, and induces fear and uncertainty for business, if we know anything about business, it's that uncertainty is a killer. So, there's two components to that, there's the communication, and then there's the what's driving the actual cost, and why would we see a 38% year-over-year increase in a critical utility that, that is essential, right? On the communication front, I talked a bit about that, on the, the actual drivers of the cost, I'm, I'm curious to know, one, can we better smooth these out? So, a business, a local business doesn't see a 38% or whatever it ends up being increase year-over-year? Is that, to what extent are we taking a long, you know, multi-year look, and trying to really smooth these out, stretch them out, defer the non-essentials?
Yes, I think for the question, Mayor, so I think on that last point, you know, one of the reasons why I think the, the, the rate of the overall amount is, is higher, is we didn't have a rate increase last year for, for, for sanitary sewer, right? So, we had a 0% rate increase last year, so, because we didn't need the revenue for that year, you know, it is a little bit more of a catch-up, when we actually do need the revenue again, right? So, that is a, a component, as we look at the amount of revenue required to sort of deliver the services budget for that, for that year, those are the things that we look at. And so, that, as our operating costs go up, you know, that's what we have to do to recover those, those costs. You know, there are things that I know we are looking at as, as administration, as we look at sort of our broader capital side, is to look at some additional potential financing options as part of the future, that could potentially lower some of the contributions in the future. So, our capital contributions have been very steady for the sanitary sewer capital side, and, and so that's something that we could potentially be lowering that in the future. But those, that would maybe provide some opportunity for, for some smoothing, but in each year, we have to look at what the expect, the expected requirements are to deliver the various services, including capital and operating, and then have rates that sort of that meet that. I think we want to, to the extent that we can smooth those in the future through some additional sort of mechanisms, I think we'll definitely be looking at that, and we already have sort of prior council direction to sort of, to see the feasibility of those. But I think the rates that we have today are for to meet the expectations of what we have currently.
Yeah, it just concerns me that we would not assess a fee and then say, well, we gotta go really high the next year to catch up. I, I just, I don't think that creates a good customer. good customer experience. I think businesses need predictability, and it just doesn't seem very strategic of us as a city, because we don't get credit for the year where we don't increase the fees. But when somebody then gets a letter that says your costs here may go up 38%, I think, you know, if we're gonna, as I think we very much need to, work hard to keep manufacturing jobs in San Jose, which helps us have a diverse middle class, which creates good, high-paying jobs for people with a range of educational levels, we're gonna have to do better. And both in the communication and in figuring out how to control fees, so people don't just move their business to the Central Valley or wherever else they may go, or shut down altogether because they can't afford the move. In terms of what's driving the costs here, to what extent could you help the council understand what's a "have-to-have" this year legally required versus, or just otherwise absolutely essential, or it's going to cost us more in the long run to not do it this year versus a "nice-to-have" or something that could be deferred?
I mean, I don't know that we have any "nice-to-haves" in the budget, so I do want to be clear about that. We don't have a lot of those items. To the extent that, you know, what would be deferred and what would be the impact of deferring that, I think that would require some additional analysis unless Carrie has a magical answer for that one. I don't know, but yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, I think reducing the public works capital transfer and riding a little bit longer on the reserves that we have in there would lower the rate.
Okay. Yeah, I just, what I do know is that, I'm not nearly as close to it as you guys are, but small, local, a local manufacturing business getting a 38% year-over-year increase in a critical utility is not going to be sustainable. It's going to drive jobs out of San Jose. Councilor Dwan?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to agree with you. When you throw a shock value to our manufacturer out there, businesses are already suffering as it is. They were paying way too high with taxes, and then we throw in a surprise like this. And this is what I'm talking about. We continue a little bit of tax here, a little bit of tax there. Somebody's telling, oh, yeah, well, I'm only paying 120. Well, you know, if somebody bought a home five years ago at $1.5 million, that's $228. That's not including any other taxes, and from sewage to water fees and so on. This is what slowly, you know, we gentification, we're pushing the underserved family to the brink of not being able to live here. And I think it's important that we continue to make sure, to make sure the city of San Jose is business-friendly. We don't overtax and overburden both the residential and businesses, because without them, there won't be jobs. Without jobs, people can't survive in the Bay Area. Thank you.
And I just want to clarify, because I just talked to the attorney, just based on my knowledge, is that we have to be, you know, we have been looking at smoothing, but there is, it is problematic to raise rates in a year when we don't have the expenditure need to smooth it. It gets very complicated. So, if you did defer, that would also just, I mean, if there was things to defer there, and I would want Public Works here to understand what that impact would be that Carrie described. But we're going to push off into higher rates the following year, and we've got a lot of work out at the plant and things like that that's coming. So, we just have to be super careful about those decisions, because we're always striving to keep our rates as low as possible, and I totally understand and appreciate the variability and how, the unpredictability of that. But we also, to have smoothed that potentially out, if we raised revenue in a year that we weren't planning to do projects, or we weren't planning to do the work, that could be problematic as well, because we've got to charge the users during the year that we think the work is going to happen, although capital projects often span multiple years. So, I just want to make sure we're trying to balance all those things out within Prop 218. So, I just want to make that clear.
Thanks, Jennifer. That's helpful. Councilor Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. So, it is true that our rates for sewer, sanitary sewer are increasing more rapidly than some of the other things, but also, we are on an incredibly large and complex water treatment plant that we have that is, what, 60 or 70 years old? We have just been going through a significant capital investment to make a lot, to add a lot to that plant. The new digesters, the new headworks, a lot of things that were necessary that were very costly. And we have this conversation, those of us who sit on the Treatment Plant Advisory Committee have this conversation monthly with folks that are across the county that receive service from this plant, asking, you know, what needs to be done and what doesn't. And we've talked about what can be deferred and what can't, what needs to be done now, and what the escalation factors would be if we were to delay some of these projects. And we've come to conclude that the cost would go up significantly by not doing the capital work now, and the risk of also of a failure at the treatment plan is something we certainly cannot have. So, that 9% increase is something that's a lot, but is justified in my mind. I think there's some angst on this table in here, the schedule of proposed increases. And first of all, the notice that went out, and I haven't seen a notice that goes to a business, so to hear that the notice was general enough to say 0 to 38 is kind of, is obviously concerning. But this schedule does list specific numbers, and so people should be able to point to a number here. I mean, this is very detailed, which means any business should be able to get an answer as to what their increase would be based on this table that's in this memo here. And I'm not saying that they should be able to figure that out, but the city should be able to help them figure out where they fall on this table. And so, I kind of want to ask a couple of questions about this table. I've heard this 38% number, it looks like the highest number in this table is 24. That 38% is that early notice that goes out that says there's a range? Is that correct? And that the max now is 24?
Yes, that's correct. The notice is maximum.
So, is that, maybe if you have?
Well, I just want to clarify, are you saying now that the 38% is, no one will have a 38% increase, 24 is the maximum?
So, thank you. At the start of the noticing period, we all collaborate and say, what is the top level? Because we're required to notice maximum, and then we try and kind of bring it down from there. So, I think, if I recall correctly, we noticed 10% for residential? What did we notify for residential? So, never mind. Yeah, but it's, 38% is the max, you're right. I don't see it on here, but there must be some industry somewhere in the portfolio that showed a 38%, and as our accountants were looking through it.
So, there's might be more that are not on this table here?
There are more sectors.
Okay. I also am a little bit surprised to see some go down and some go up. I'm trying to, I guess I'm trying to understand how this, what this means. I mean, I understand different industries have different kinds of effluents that are treated differently. On the other hand, it's surprising that anybody's effluent treatment cost would go down, given that we're increasing costs across the board. So, can you just kind of explain why somebody would see a decrease in their sewer fee while others are seeing an increase?
Thank you. So, the rate model that we use as an organization that is based on the state model has, say, we're working on a capital project now, dewatering, that focuses on solids. So, if you were discharging a higher percentage of solids, you would see an increase in that parameter, right? But if you were in, and then maybe five years from now, when we're done that project, you might see a decrease in that parameter. And so, it's based on where the money is going in that budget cycle, and that, some of that is projects, some of that is on a particular treatment train. If it's using significantly more chemicals now, you would see that increase, because to treat the material that that company sent us requires a higher cost, because there's increased chemical need. So, each of the 50 monitored industries is a little bit different, I'm sorry. Each of the 50 monitored sites in our city are customized, and then these other ones are by category. So, it is an incredibly complex and confusing process, but it is based on the cost to treat that companies or that type of processing discharge.
Yeah, so I mean, so potentially because solids are treated, because we've done some work recently on solids, and solids' costs are going up, and that would explain paper pulp mills being at 21%. I don't know where we have a paper mill in San Jose, I'm not sure. But that's a 21% increase, and presumably, wineries have some effluents that are different. But if we want to, I just want to also be careful in some of our statements about this being bad for manufacturing, because if you look at machinery manufacturers, they're basically the same rate as everybody else. There are some, a manufacturer like Electrical Equipment, which actually have a decrease in rates. And so, we shouldn't necessarily also send the message from this discussion across the board that this is bad for manufacturing in general. A lot of manufacturing categories are at the 10% or less, which are similar to, or less than what everybody else is paying across the city. There are a few, which I'd be interested to understand why, but there are a few that have higher rate increases that we should probably be concerned about. But let's just be careful also about this general message, that this is somehow driving, going to drive manufacturing out of the city. So, I just want to be careful about that. But if you have any more understanding about maybe why some of these are at the high end, it would be helpful.
Councilmember Jeff Provenzano is going to give, I think, a better description of the billing process.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Jeff Provenzano, Assistant Director, ESD. I heard it kind of mentioned, so, in some form. I mean, it is a little bit complex. We've already established that. The way it works for, there's 50 monitored sites, Carrie already mentioned that. And the way that works is, it's not only the flow, the amount of wastewater they're putting in the system, but it's also the quality of it. The more organics, the more ammonia, these are things that are, we spend a lot of money, air, power to treat, and it has impacts on the sanitary system as it goes through, and impacts on the wastewater treatment site. So, each of these 50 monitor sites, we're out there throughout the year working with them and monitoring the water that's going in. We do have a flow study, I mentioned that, it was mentioned earlier, it was about five years ago since our last flow study. And what that flow study does is it gives us a basis for how we should be partitioning out costs and compliance with state law, based on both flow and the type of wastewater that is going into the sanitary sewer from each of these sites. And then, and it was also mentioned, next year in the proposed budget, we are going to redo that flow study to make sure that our numbers and our formulas are up to date, to make sure that we're charging proportionally customers that are, again, the amount of volume, but more importantly, what's in that water, that we're assessing that correctly and charging the right amount. And then with that, definitely an improved communication strategy, especially for those 50 sites where it can be so variable.
Thank you for the further clarification. I appreciate that explanation. And also, it explains why some businesses and some industries have pre-treatment of their own effluents before they put it into the sewer system, because they remove a lot of the things that make it hard on our water treatment plant and our systems to handle. So, the different businesses have different kinds of effluents, and some of these are in the low end of charges because of that. So, anyway, I think it's, this is complex, but I think it's important for us to realize the complexity as we're making this decision. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Councilor. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Just out of curiosity, and I know that there are a lot of different requirements with 218, are we not able to do a stabilization fund?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We generally are not able to do a stabilization fund. Prop 218 requires that we sort of bill that customer for the use that they have. We do try and ensure we have healthy fund balance, though, so we can somewhat smooth out rates.
Okay. And then, alternatively, you know, in terms of the regular sort of treatment of the effluent and all of that, during the times when you have high capital improvements, is there such a thing, and I just don't know, so I'm just asking, is there such a thing as the ability to say, hey, you know, we're going to have for the next two years, this huge capital improvement, and there's going to be a certain amount increase due to this, but then after two years, or whatever it is, then that should come down, because it's only for a two-year period? And I just have experience of, you know, having to pay a homeowners association fee that, you know, every year that goes up, right? But, you know, in a certain time, we needed to change all of the piping, but it was sort of a one-time thing, and a special assessment was done just for that one-time capital improvement project. And we knew that after 18 months, that it would revert back to the regular amount. So, you know, we had certainty of knowing, okay, well, this is what's happening, right? We need pipes, so there you go. And I don't know if you can do that kind of thing, because I think that at least, you know, there's sort of, it's a little bit more transparent of, you know, what the fee's going to be over the period of time, and then this is going to be the increase, but it's only going to be for a certain time. I don't know if you can do that, so I'm just asking.
Thank you, yes. With the exception of the collection system, there are certainly, there is certainly some variation in terms of wastewater, non-residential customers. But I did also want to point out Attachment C, which shows the regional rates. So, the wastewater facility, working with the Finance Department and the Budget Department, from an RWF standpoint, we have gotten bonds and other external funding to smooth out our rates. And you can see in Attachment C, we are the most affordable provider in the region. And even with agencies that use the same wastewater facility, we are, we are less expensive. So, I think that perspective is also important.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Vice Mayor. I'll just reiterate before we entertain a motion. I think it's really important that we try to improve certainty in communication. Just as an example, I know Dan's one example of a local business we all care about keeping here. Got a notice at 38%, you know, then an initial calculation that may be about 10%, and this morning got a calculation that it would be 27%. So, I think ideally, we would figure out, using information technology, how to more clearly calculate what the fee's going to be, and narrow that range and give greater certainty before we do that initial noticing. When are we mandated to do the initial noticing? Do we have the ability to front-load more of our calculation and get, narrow the band, and even if it's not a perfect final number, give greater certainty?
Well, we do, we do start planning our rate noticing in December for a June budget hearing. But until the organization has an idea of what that maximum rate might be, we're not in a position to send out those notices. We can estimate the regional wastewater facility component, but then there's still items that Transportation and Public Works and other city departments would add in there. So, I think around the timeline that we have a general idea is, I think, this year, the end of February?
Yeah, I think maybe almost even in the March timeframe, although I know that Carrie does a very good job of reminding me on a weekly basis that we need to finalize the rates of the week's notice.
I do want to say that sometime, you know, in the past, I don't know if we've done this recently, sometimes we'll do multi-year noticing to save a lot of the costs, so.
Yeah, that makes sense. I think Vice Mayor was pointing to something like that.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, do we have other questions, comments, or a motion?
Sounds applicable.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to approve the recommended fees and charges. Tony?
Motion passes 10 to 1, with Dwan voting no. I also have the results from 3.3, so we can go back to that one.
All right, we'll go back to 3.3. We have the renewal, so that passes. We have the renewal of the Willow Glen Community Benefit Improvement. Let me go back to my script. Tony, is this the point at which you read out the results?
Yes.
Okay, there we go.
I have the results regarding the tabulation of the property owner ballots for the Willow Glen Community Benefit Improvement District. The results of the tabulation are, property owners with a total of 141,955.76 votes have returned ballots in support of the levy of assessments, and property owners with a total of 90,383.44 votes have returned ballots in opposition to the levy of assessments. Therefore, the ballots submitted by property owners in the Willow Glen Community Benefit Improvement District in support of the levy of assessments exceeds the ballots submitted in opposition to the levy of assessments. The city council may proceed to vote on imposition of the assessment.
Ballots submitted by property owners in the Willow Glen Community Benefit District in support of the expansion, renewal, and levy of assessments on those parcels within the district are greater in number than those in opposition. the district are greater in number than those in opposition. City Council may proceed to vote on expansion and renewal of the district and the levy of assessments. I will now ask the Council to consider adoption of a resolution declaring the results of the special election, approving the management plan and engineer's report, base assessment and annual adjustments, and the expansion and renewal of the Willow Glen Community Benefit District, and levying assessments on those parcels within the district as stated in the management plan and engineer's report.
So now we need a motion?
We need a motion to...
Second.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, motion from Councilwoman Davis to adopt a resolution declaring the results of the special election.
You still have one vote? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. 3.3 passes unanimously. We just concluded 6.2 prior to that, so we are on to item 6.3, public hearing on residential garbage and recycling services rates for single-family and multifamily residential solid waste services. Tony?
Subsequent to ESD's supplemental memorandum dated June 4, 2024, the City Clerk's Office has received 38 additional residential garbage and recycling rate protests. Therefore, the total number of valid written protests is 734 for the proposed residential garbage and recycling rates. And I have one speaker card for Lucy Moran. Come on down.
Dear City Council members, thank you for being here, making a difference for your community. Thank you. Thank you, City Council, Mayor, and all the City Council people, thank you. I want to thank you for this opportunity to consider not raising our garbage recycling service, even though I do believe in recycling. I think recycling will pay for itself if we do it correctly, as I was, well, the first Willow Glen recycling, because environmentalist back in, when I was only 14, and time flies. But anyway, I'm going through a lot during this economic trying times personally, and the American dream was get an education and better your life, make a difference, and you can. And with that in mind, that's why I'm still alive, I believe, trying to make a difference, not only for our families and our community, Sacred Heart Community, I've been an advocate, helping with the transportation and BTA, as well as trying to keep people moving so they keep their jobs and not get displaced and become homeless. As a first-time buyer, when I was younger, it was a big responsibility going to college as a student and a single parent, and life happens. And you just want to hold on to what you worked so hard for. And I still believe in tenants are making a difference by working families, staying here in Ark...
Thank you for your time. Your time is up? Your time is up? Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
The total of, hold on, just, the total of all written protests during the public protest period, together with the speaker protesting the rate change today, represents less than 1% of all customers impacted by the change in residential garbage and recycling rates. Therefore, Council may consider staff's recommendation for residential garbage and recycling rate increases. Back to Council.
Okay. Thank you. Coming back to the Council, do we have a motion?
Move approval, second.
Okay. Councilwoman Cohen?
I do have a question, I think maybe for Carrie. I'm just, and this isn't expressing any concerns about it necessarily, but I do want to ask, we, our rates are on the high end of the scale for single-family and very, very low for multifamily. Can you just explain why, how our numbers are so out of line in the multifamily and why we're above average, close to the top of the scale for a single-family?
Thank you, Councilmember. To be honest, we're still digging into that because the spread is, is growing, but we did do, we did provide one of our recycling haulers a significant compensation increase in the last contract, and so the multifamily did not get an increase, but some of the single-family haulers did.
I wouldn't, it doesn't look like the, an increase would explain that much of a gap that I'm seeing in the multifamily, of course. I mean, it's great for our rate payers and multifamily residences that this rate is as low as it is relative to other cities, but I'm, I guess it's something for us, me to figure out and understand, because it seems, I'm just surprised to see that number. I never, never noticed that before.
Yeah, thank you. I share that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I'm going to support the motion, but, you know, moving forward, I think that we do have to keep in mind in terms of the increases of our, of our garbage rates. And, you know, in my, and I don't know if this is the same across all of the communities, but, you know, we encourage recycling quite a bit. My recycling bin is so much larger than my trash bin, and I know that people get confused. And when you don't have enough room in your garbage, we certainly don't want to create a disincentive to have people put things in their recycling that should not go there. So I think that as we, you know, sort of like, think about increases, we have to be mindful in terms of, you know, how we continue to do that public education, because invariably, sometimes things get put where they're not supposed to be. And, you know, I think that we do, we do have to, you know, sort of keep that in mind, because as it starts getting more and more expensive, then, you know, the things that happen are sometimes uncontrollable, so.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have been working on a rate study analysis, as well as doing pilots for larger garbage carts to see where that, where that might reduce the contamination, because our rates do increase as contamination increases. And then we've also been doing some work in the last couple of months with good job and oops tags, and so doing those types of pilots to sort of make sure we focus on things that produce results before we go citywide. And so as we get the results back from those particular pilots, and then some idea of which economic levers can drive the right results, we'll be able to bring back something to Council that makes sense.
Since you're doing that, you know, I mean, I do know that other cities have gone to a little tiny, small container for their food waste, that, you know, sometimes people don't know, oh, well, if I have a bunch of oranges, you know, they could go into the recycle or the plant area, you know. People get sometimes confused. So I think that as you're thinking about this, you know, other communities have started an additional little thing for, for food scraps or waste or whatever that I think could be helpful.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We do backend sort the garbage cans, so we get full recovery of the organics, which has helped us keep our rates lower than they would have been had we not done that. And also just want to remind Council that we are the only city that has unlimited free junk pickup, and that, that cost is also built into the rates.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, we have a motion. I don't see any other hands up. Let's vote.
Motion passes unanimously, no, motion passes 9 to 2, with Dwan and Candelaus voting no.
We'll go to item 6.4, San Jose Municipal Water System Potable and Recycled Water Rates.
Subsequent to ESD's supplemental memorandum dated May 31, the City Clerk's Office has received 11 additional potable water rate protests. Therefore, the total number of valid written protests is 142 for the proposed potable water rates. No protests have been received from recycled water customers in response to the proposed recycled water rates. I have a public speaker, Lucy Moran. And Lucy, you have two minutes.
Thank you again for hearing me out. I do believe in recycled water and having clean water for everybody to drink. It's very important to keep people alive and well, although we're still in this time where uncertainty and coronavirus put me unemployed from four different jobs, and also as a substitute teacher. So we're still trying to pay the property taxes, because it got raised from what I was paying before to $15,000 a year. It's ridiculous. I was very disappointed in the system because somehow I fell through the cracks because of Prop 19 and a misunderstanding, and I had to borrow money and use credit card, and it was crazy, and I've been trying to deal with coronavirus, stay alive. I just think about my community, if I'm hurting as a homeowner, I can imagine those home first-time buyers and children and schools and, I just think this is not a good time right now to raise any increase until after there's a little more certainty on our system of, like you said, not having our businesses displaced, go somewhere else just because of increases on property taxes. Thank you for your time. Time's up, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Tony, any other hands?
No, no more hands. I just had to scroll down to the rest of the script.
Go ahead.
The total of all written protests during the public protest period, together with the speaker protesting the rate change today, represents less than 1% of all customers impacted by the change in water retail rates. Therefore, Council may consider staff's recommendation for municipal water system rate increases. Back to Council.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. Coming back to the Council, do we have a motion on item 6.4?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Foley. Thank you. I don't see any other hands. Let's vote.
Motion passes 8 to 2, with Cohen absent and Dwan and Candelaus voting no.
Thank you. We are now on to item 8.1. It's the Public Hearing on the Downtown Business Improvement District Report and Budget and Assessments for Fiscal Year 2024-2025. And I do have a script. Item 8.1 is the public hearing for the approval of the Downtown Business Improvement District's annual budget report and the levy of assessments for fiscal year 2024-2025. Before I open the public hearing, has the City Clerk received any written protests from affected businesses in the bid?
No written protests have been received from either the Japantown or Downtown BID.
Thank you. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Do we have any public testimony?
We have no cards.
Okay. We will now close the public hearing. Since the business owners in the Downtown Business Improvement District have supported the proposed levy of assessments, I will now ask the Council to consider adoption of the resolution and approval of the ordinance approving the budget report of the Downtown Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2024-2025, and levying assessments in the bid for fiscal year 2024-2025. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Torres?
Good afternoon. I just want to take the time to thank the San Jose Downtown Association. I know that Alex is here, but there could be more, more and more stakeholders involved with this, with this bid, but as you can imagine, they're out, you know, working and creating vibrancy in downtown San Jose. So with that, move to approve item 8.1, even though it's already been moved, but I wanted to say that.
We have a motion. We've already got a motion, but I appreciate, appreciate your comments, no further motions needed, but we'll echo that on behalf of the whole Council. We really appreciate the, the work of the Downtown Association, and I think you all see that reflected in the June budget message, which came out today. We want to continue to support and partner with the Downtown Association and the important work they do for our downtown. Okay, unless there are any other comments, we will vote on the motion.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Item 8.2. Item 8.2 is the public hearing for the approval of the Japantown Business Improvement District's annual budget report and the levy of assessments for fiscal year 2024-2025. Before I open the public hearings, has the City Clerk received any written protests from affected businesses in the Business Improvement District?
No written protests have been received.
Thank you. At this time, we will open the public hearing.
I have no cards.
Thank you. We will now close the public hearing. Since the business owners in the Japantown Business Improvement District have supported the proposed levy of assessments, I will now ask the Council to consider adoption of the resolution and approval of the ordinance approving the budget report of the Japantown Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2024-2025, and levying assessments in the Business Improvement District for fiscal year 2024-2025. Councilwoman Torres, would you like to make the motion?
Motion to approve. I'm with Japantown.
There we go. Second from Dwan. Thank you. Any other, I don't see any other hands. Thank you, Councilmember Torres. Did you want to say anything else, or you, you good?
No, just when we invest in Japantown, we're investing in our city of San Jose, and we're investing in a very amazing business district with a lot of history and culture, and so it's important that we do this, so thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, let's vote.
I'm still waiting on two votes. I have one person absent, but that means one other person who's at the dais hasn't voted.
Everybody check their screen.
Okay, there we go. Motion passes unanimously with Foley absent.
Okay, thank you. We're on to item 8.3, approval of the San Jose Hotel Business Improvement District Annual Report for Fiscal Year 2024-2025. Do we have public comment?
I have no cards.
Coming back to the Council, do we have a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Seeing no further hands, let's vote. Thank you. And Councilwoman Foley, did you want to register a vote on item 8.2?
Yes, please.
Yes, I'll vote aye.
And Mr. Mayor, can I, can I register for 6.1? I was in the restroom when we voted for 6.1.
Tony, is that okay? Are we able to do that?
Okay. We'll let, we'll allow it. Normally, we don't, but we'll, it'll be okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we are now at open forum.
I have two cards, Matthew Frost and Shabana. Come on down.
My name is Matthew, my name is Matthew Frost. Fire station number 23... Fire Station Number 23 is being moved to where I reside. The property it's being moved to has been in my family for 175 years, as long as the city of San Jose has existed. I have a 99-year-old aunt that was born on and still resides on the property. We are being forced to negotiate through imminent, through threat of eminent domain to relinquish a portion of our property for a fire station. The original threat was to take the whole property for low-income housing. We've made it perfectly clear to the city that when my aunt passes away, we're more than willing to give up the entire property. It consists of three parcels. Where I live, where my aunt lives, and where another house. Three separate parcels. This is causing my aunt undue stress to know that she's going to lose her home eventually. And she's going to have to deal with the construction of a firehouse in the back of the property. She's 99 years old. How long does she have? This is causing her undue stress. Please keep that in mind when you vote on this. This is already going through city channels.
Is that your time? Your time is up, next speaker.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Does my time start now?
Yes.
Hello, everybody. By the way, Mayor Mayhem, I hope everyone's doing well here today and well. So I am the actual former CEO of Mercy Mediterranean in the downtown San Jose food hall. And I just wanted to say like a few words. I want to also thank you, being on the news with you. I actually got out of two tickets with the police because I was like, I wasn't in a Mayhem, so that was kind of cool. But I mean, having said that, I was, yeah, that's kind of a side humor, and I'm taking my time. But what I wanted to say is that Mercy Mediterranean had to leave the food hall for two reasons. Number one, the unlawful suspension of my chef. And number two, we weren't permitted properly according to the county. And the litigation that has to do with all of that is being discussed with Cloud as well as my lawyers. The reason I actually wanted to come and specifically mention to Senator Torres and Mayor Mayhem that Mercy Mediterranean is a company that I started in order to spread light in Mercy and to kind of solve every single political problem that exists in the world by making salmon and having food and bringing people together and enjoying that food to spread and brand light. I want to urge the mayor to maybe meet me in private quarters. Number one, to talk about effective changes the county could have done better in order to resolve the problem for me. Number two, I would like to meet the mayor and all of you in private quarters to let you know that I would really like a chance to still serve the San Jose community. I had a lot of elite, intelligent ideas, branding food alone that could solve the homelessness issues among more. And the last humble request that I have from the mayor and the staff is right now, to add insult to injury, the Cloud Kitchen is actually asking me for $36,000 of $100,000 debt that I have accrued from the law...
I'm sorry, is that your time?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Tony. We are now adjourned.